Ready? Okay. All right, let's bring the city council meeting for December 10th, 2024 to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. New to the line, the United States. To the Republican public, for which it stands. One nation under their god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call it roll, please?
Mayor Carter.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Present.
Councilmember Baldwin. Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Fullerton. Councilmember Hubler.
Here.
Councilmember McLehmanns.
Here.
And Councilmember Rock.
Here.
Make a motion to excuse Councilmember Fullerton for this evening's agenda.
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor of excusing Councilmember Fullerton, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There are no agenda modifications, but we do have something the clerk wanted to say about a clerical error, if you want to discuss that.
Mr. Mayor, it is not an agenda modification, but we do have a couple items that have been updated and the changes have been given to the council members and also up front for the public. AB 2439, that is under consent. The effective date has been changed to January 1st of 2025 in order to give staff time to update software and to send out any needed notices. And then AB 24119, we had to do some update to the language in the agreement and the new updated agreement is in front of you guys also.
Thank you.
Oh. Oh, and the budget is missing, sorry. The budget was missing some exhibits and so those are printed and put in front of you guys, too.
Thank you. Thanks. And then we have one appointment, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 24124, motion M 24124. The council motion would be to confirm the mayor's appointment of Jason Sullivan to serve as Public Services Director.
Any discussion? Councilmember McLehmanns.
Need a motion first, please.
All right.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Councilmember McLehmanns.
Yeah, so I would like to congratulate Jason. I think this is fabulous. I think it's interesting that Jason and John are sitting next to each other. I would be very reluctant to support this if I didn't and hadn't seen the excellent work that these two do together. I mean, the city is in excellent shape because of their diligence. The things that would cause me concern typically, though, in an organization, I feel like I'm picking two quarterbacks, right, to lead my team or I have two forwards on a basketball team or I have two goalies on a soccer team. They're both city planners. They're both very good at what they do and understanding how that works. And so that would usually lead me to be suspect. In our effort to make sure that Bonnie Lake has a limited government and not a government that overreaches, the training that planners typically get and have can lead to growth and code and expansion. Both Jason and John have showed great respect for our wishes and have worked really hard not to do that. So I enthusiastically endorse Jason. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the administration and everybody for participating in an actual open hiring process. You know, I really appreciate that, so love to see that. And of course, I've worked with many planners over the years. I've had the opportunity to work with like at least four. I can't remember all their names, but you know, goes back to Craig Fleming and then the guy before that, so. Steve Ladd and those guys, right, way back then. And it's, I thought Mr. Vodopich was an outstanding planner when he was in that position, director. So, you know, it's hard to come up and get above that, but I think Mr. Sullivan was able to do that. You know, he's one of the best I've ever argued with, seldom one in an argument, so he's an expert at that. So I'd be happy to support this and hopefully he'll do a great job. I think it's kind of crazy he wants to move up into that. Sad to lose some of his planning experience, but at least he'll be around here, you know, to help out his underlings. Really appreciate it and hopefully it'll work out well. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for appointing him.
And I'll just throw out then that, you know, we did have an open hiring process and we came, I think it was 18 applications or whatnot. We ended up bringing three through, one dropped out, and then we ended up with two, Jason and one other person, who did a great job. Both of them did a fantastic job of representing themselves and their history and whatnot. And then made the choice, I think Mr. Sullivan will do a fantastic job, I wholeheartedly, you know, I can't say anything better as far as the job that he's done and what we look forward for him to do in there in the future. Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, all those in favor of AB 24-124 and appointing Mr. Sullivan as the Public Services Director, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Awesome, thank you, congratulations. Yeah, you have a great showing out there backing you up, too. That's nice.
A whole 16 people department. Effort. Comes on the mouthpiece. All of those guys.
Thank you. Okay, next we go on to citizen comments. This is your time to address the council on city business. For those who are attending virtually, please click the raise hand icon at top of your screen if you would like to address the council. Anyone with the raised hand icon or who called in, your mics and cameras will be enabled. You will need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and move to virtual comments afterwards. You have five minutes, please state your name and address for the record, please. Anyone who would like to come up, can come up. Yep.
I'm Catherine Ford. I live at 1821477th Street East in Bonnie Lake, on Lake Bonnie. And I am here to give you an update on a permit that was approved to clear cut nearly five acres of the greenbelt, 630 feet right from the lake, which in essence would eliminate the entire greenbelt of the west side of the lake. And I have pictures I'm happy to share with you after, but I want to circulate this with our honorable mayor and councilpeople so that they really take a look at this, take it and understand the gravity of this. I'll start with that. A petition was filed on December 2nd and it was given, assigned a PLN number. And in addition to that, I've been soliciting some signatures and the petition, I have over 50 signatures I'd like to also leave with you. And if anybody else who's here and hears about this would like to sign a petition to prevent the city from putting a development of 19 homes in just 600 feet from Bonnie Lake, let me know. Please take the opportunity to look at the picture. I raised an objection on several grounds, environmental impact, urban canopy loss, clear cutting, the, call it garden plant, eliminates a crucial wind, natural wind barrier for those of us who have tall trees around the lake, especially with the effects of the Sumner Grade Fire. This would put us in grave danger. I also want to say that it would protect the water and the soil, that's what forests do. It would eliminate a hotspot from being created and so we'd have some climate resilience. And also there wasn't, there was no environmental assessment done for this property because the city didn't think it was needed. There was a lot of community input and some of that I would like to share with you if we have time today, why I find that a bit disturbing how it was or not addressed. Caliber SEPA application, some of the comments said that the people who did comment found it deceptive and incomplete. And if I have time, I'll share some of those as well. And also the city of Bonnie Lake used the Department of Fish and Wildlife Priority Species Habitat map as their authoritative data source, even though a biologist never came and surveyed the area to see if in fact there were any endangered species. Also, Bonnie Lake, Lake Bonnie is a migratory bird lake and even though the eagles are not an endangered species, they still are protected. And a lot of the birds who are migratory through there are on and covered by a federal act called the Wildlife Bird Preservation Treaty Act, and that was never addressed as well. So I also want to pass around what a tree root system. They offer a lot more than just. And according to this development, any wildlife there, additional trees, plants, animals, birds would all be taken away. I also represent not only the myself as a person who lives on the lake, but also the Lake Bonnie Conservation Association. We are a nonprofit organization who have formed as stewards of the lake and we take that very personally to try to make sure that the lake as a, as a resource for the community and all of us on it is healthy and that we address any issues that come up. I don't know if somebody's keeping time. At this point, I also want to share what some of the comments were. This is, the underdeveloped areas is a proposal, a migratory path for many animals and many more birds were mentioned than the proposal. Having lived adjacent to the property for five years, I have seen a variety of birds, eagles, hawks, owls, none of them were mentioned in the proposal. I have personally seen raccoons, deer, coyote, caught black bear on a trail camera and many more using this as a safe passage through neighborhoods, but the proposal leaving out blatantly obvious animals like deer is questionable. And the city's response was acknowledged, the project will maintain one acre of trees as retention area. According to Washington Department Fish and Wildlife Priority Species and Habitats map, there are no known endangered sensitive species there. And on the Washington Wildlife Priority Species Habitat map, I want to share what they wrote.
That's your time, sorry. Thank you.
Can I finish this one? Okay, the map has limitations, although mapped PHS data.
We have to.
Okay, I have this.
We have to stick to the five minutes. We let you go a little bit late last time.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Cheryl Robertson. I live at 13413, 193rd Avenue East in Bonnie Lake and I'm supporting Catherine's attempts to get across how important it is to look at this and make sure that you guys are doing what you can to not just, I don't want to say blatantly, but just, you know, off the cuff, build 19 homes on five acres because that's really going to benefit the community. They need 19 more homes, 600 and some odd feet from the lake. So Catherine was reading this article and so I'm going to try and read it. Bet my distant glasses. Although mapped, P A.
Terry, do you have your glasses?
I hate speaking in front of people, but I'm going to do this. Although mapped, PHS data is useful for determining the general extent of priority species or habitats, the department has not surveyed the entire state of Washington. PHS map data is meant to serve as a starting point to identify priority habitats and species. It is not meant to replace or preempt more detailed field-based site-level mapping. Site-specific surveys are usually needed to rule out the presence of priority habitats or species. PHS maps do not provide an official agency determination of the potential impacts of a specific project to fish and wildlife. Catherine has gone to great lengths to really delve into this and get you the facts. I work for an environmental group at a firm in Seattle and I sent an email to you all, you might remember it, I mentioned super fun sites. The Duamish is a super fun site and once it's gone, it's gone. So if you want to destroy five acres of forested land, 600 and some odd feet from a lake that are used for migratory animals, owls, and lots of things that don't really have a home or a spokesperson anymore, so I really support Catherine getting up here and, and making an effort to put you guys on notice. Once it's gone, it's gone. Catherine, can I say anything else for you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dana McCauley, 1821174th Street East, Bonnie Lake. I just am here also to support looking at this really carefully. I'm the current sitting president of the Lake Bonnie Conservation Association and we've really been off your guys' radar for a long time. I've worked with Dan in the past. Lake Bonnie is a beautiful natural resource for this community. You have public access, the state has public access, you have a park on it. It's the namesake of our city. The city has a history of using the lake as a drainage pond. We have, through my backyard, there's an easement, 13 city blocks drain directly into the lake. It's been a long time since we brought this concern, but I want to get us on your radar again. We've seen severe degradation of the lake in the last three to four years and it's time to take action. This is the wrong direction. So I hope, I sincerely hope all of you will take a look at this permitting process and how it's going to affect the watershed, the water quality, the drainage, the beneficial uses of this lake, the wildlife, the fish, the children that swim in it. It's not just our property owners around the lake that are concerned. This is a community concern and it's a community resource. So I'm just here to support Catherine and hope you'll take a serious look at it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else for the good of the order?
Council Mayor, I'm past councilmember Dan Decker, 20470th Street East, Bonnie Lake, Washington. What does a narcissist hide from us? Old and fat is the road of life. I see someone is on that road of life. I made contact with people this year in Aberdeen. What about Miller Junior High in Aberdeen? What about those stories told by Weatherwax alumnus? The special attention you gave, they still rejected. Why did you bother going to community college when all you did was failed? Your failure in marriage showed no control. Failure after failure seemed to be your life story. Six contempt of court show your lack of responsibility. Your lack of responsibility is very evident even now. Your outburst to our new mayor proves you're emotionally disabled. Your failure to apologize only takes your failure a step closer to being not liked. Your lack of professionalism causes everyone to look away from you. Telling an individual he is the father of the child in your womb. The DNA test proved you're not so truthful. Did you tell the high school boosters about Crestwood Elementary School? That's an interesting adventure. Been kicked out of the PTA. What a group of people sure were unhappy with that, weren't you? Next year we'll go on that never-ending road and reminisce on how you're not a victim and how you're not innocent. And there are 24 cities that you lived in and everyone seemed to have a story to tell. Thank you very much, council. And hey, by the way, guys, I believe this is our last council meeting of the year. I just want to say, mayor, council, you guys have done a fantastic job and thank you for bringing our new mayor to us because in my 60 years longer of being a member of the city of Bonnie Lake as a citizen, the mayor we have today is the best one we've had that I've ever seen. And thank you very much, council.
Anyone else for the good of the order? All right, we'll now start those that are virtual. We have five minutes, or you have five minutes, state your name and address for the record, please. Not seeing any hands or anyone talking there. The city will now disable all video and microphones for those attending virtually. We have no correspondence. Next is committee reports, finance committee.
Mr. Mayor, the finance committee did not meet this evening.
All right. Thank you. Community Development Committee. And she's not here.
I'm gonna fill in.
Okay.
For councilmember Fullerton. The Community Development Committee met on December 3rd upstairs at 5:00 PM. Had eight issues before us, one issue, most of them are on tonight's agenda in one form or another, either the consent agenda or full council. The first issue was rehabilitation, an inspection project for a stormwater system. We moved that forward. The other one was authorizing a contract with, for excavation and to start the sidewalk extension project on Kelly Lake Road. That's exciting and we moved that one forward as well. Authorizing award of contract for street maintenance. We moved that one forward as well. A procurement and installation of a bubbler replacement system in order to ensure the can, that we can continue to operate lift station 17 in case of a, of a problem. We moved that one forward. Authorizing, I was assured this is a technical term, piggybacking on cooperative contracts with the state of Arizona in order to facilitate procurement of, of vehicles. We moved that one forward. The permit fee protection. Refund protection so that we, we implement a system that ensures that the state doesn't make, get, make, make us refund permit fees. We moved that forward, a hearing examiner. We're going to move forward with securing a new hearing examiner and then the Pierce County Water Franchise Agreement. We moved that one forward, that will be on the full council. The next meeting, I believe, for the the next meeting for the community development will be January 7th at 5:00 PM upstairs in the executive conference room and the public's welcome.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, please.
The Public Safety Committee did not meet today, however, our next meeting will be January 14th, second Tuesday of the month. The public is welcome and it is at 3:45 PM.
Thank goodness. Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other reports. We now have the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Hubler.
I went to the AWC meeting last week for the, their little get-together thing. A lot of the, several cities from Washington were there, mostly from our side of the state, of course, because it's closer. But they had the legislative rep get up and discuss what's coming up in legislative sessions, so I want to make sure you guys kind of know what's coming up. They are talking about a Public Works Board Assistance Account. The state is currently expected to be $8 to $12 million in the deficit. They are talking about how they can raise more taxes instead of cutting funding to offset that. The, we were told that we need to advocate with the legislators and the senators on what our city's needs are. They talked about how a lot of cities are building roundabouts and they are working very efficiently within the city limits. And because gas taxes have gone down, because there's so many more EV cars, they're talking about adding either a retail delivery fee or a mileage-based road usage fee. The incoming governor has said that he is going to be pushing for $100 billion more for police funding. They're talking about a criminal justice assistance fund and that the state is talking about putting their fingers in more of local zoning and development. They're talking about permit reform to make housing more affordable within cities and counties and they're talking about one way of adding more taxes is a property tax lid lift at the state level. The, one of the cities that was present during the meeting had mentioned maybe having a regional police authority for the smaller outlying areas like our area. And they said to be very diligent that our citizens and our councilmembers need to be talking to the legislators to let them know what our citizens' feelings are on the property tax lid lift, so they know whether they should or should not be voting for that. That's it.
Well, that was all very depressing.
I know.
I would encourage councilmembers to reach out to legislators, senators and yeah, get your feelings known. And citizens to reach out as well, they're your representatives. Councilwoman Baldwin.
Since the ADBC is apparently our advocate, if you will, did they say what they were going to do as far as talking with the legislature also about these issues, such as the raising of the taxes because they don't want to cut budget? We're not surprised by that. Or with the zoning, getting their hands on the zone, that's ridiculous. That is utterly ridiculous. Did they say anything to that effect, that they are going to do something because technically they are supposed to be our advocate? That is what the AWC is.
Yes, and it did not feel like they were advocating, in my personal opinion, like they were advocating against this stuff. It felt like they were more just kind of like, here's what they're doing and now it's on you guys to kind of go to the legislators and the senators and make sure that they know what our cities want.
So I sat on the Legislative Committee for AWC for the first time this year and basically what it was is coming up with the top five things that we, the cities really wanted to push for and not necessarily taking a lot of positions on everything else that the state is going to do. They just wanted like five things, here's what we're going to push for, see if we can get any of those types of things. So that's what I found going through that process. That committee was, was probably 50 people on it, it was a huge committee. Yeah, it was very large. And you have all-size cities that are on there, too. So not everybody's agreeing on stuff, so it was very difficult just to get five things as to what we actually wanted to push for. But I think to your question, I don't think they're going to push for anything on those items unless it came through that committee.
Wow.
Yeah. Sad, yes. Any other reports? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. We do have full council issues, item A, Madam Clerk.
This is item AB 24119, Resolution R 24119. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Witherspoon, Rashkitch, Mcfee, P L L C, to provide hearing examiner services and appointing Brian T. McGwin as a hearing examiner and appellate hearing examiner pro temp.
Promotion? So moved. Okay.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Those in favor of Resolution R 24-119, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay. Next item, Madam Clerk. Oh, sorry, Councilmember McLemmons.
Sorry, I was looking for the addendum for that item, and it caught me by surprise. There's one thing I did want to say about the hearing examiner, right? And I wanted to have a discussion. We didn't, we have, I asked to not have this put on the consent agenda because I think, I feel strongly that hiring a third party to do this work is taking the public representation that the public has on appeal away from them and putting in a bureaucratic solution instead of a solution that is actually a voted-in member. I get concerned because, you know, it's, the bureaucrat, you can replace bureaucrats. Bureaucrats were probably going to get the same answer because they're going to follow a process. They're going to read a book or read the law, get legal counsel, or they are legal counsel, and they'll make a decision based on those things where this council will be responsible to the citizens for the results of these appeals. So I felt like this, I really have a hard time having a hearing examiner answer appeals. I understand it puts us in a bad place as a quasi-judicial, but we're making law every day. We just passed a bunch of laws, right, on the consent agenda? We got to take that seriously as well. So I just feel strongly it's just an abdication of one of our responsibilities as elected officials, and we've approved this, and now all we're simply doing, all this is simply doing is just filling the slot that we approve. But I would, you know, I would encourage you to think carefully about this, and at the termination of this contract, I think in a year, right? Perhaps we can consider reversing this and going back to council handling the appeals. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next item, Madam Clerk.
This item is AB 24123, Resolution R 24123. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a 10-year water franchise agreement with Pierce County.
Motion.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on this item? Confirm. Oh, Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Do we have any background from any committee members prior to me asking questions? I wasn't on this committee.
So we currently don't have a franchise. We don't have an agreement with Pierce County currently. It expired two years ago, four years ago. The fact that this is a 10-year commitment, I oppose the 10-year commitment with Sumner Sewer. I'm not a fan of 10-year commitments, but the fact that it takes a lot of work to set one of these up, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts to get it approved, right, may warrant 10 years. And, you know, I guess the question really to ask publicly, in case people are asking this on here, what happens if we don't pass?
I mean, I can answer that question. So if the franchise agreement's not approved, then it puts us in a very kind of tenuous position when it comes to our watering system. As you know, our water system is three times larger than the city, so as we like to say, we go from Lakeland Hills to Rhodes Lake Road all the way around the lake. And so anytime we're outside the city of Bonny Lake, we're operating in an unincorporated Pierce County, and puts us in a tenuous legal position when it comes to our water infrastructure out in the county. It also increases costs for our ratepayers when we have to go out and do a repair in the county. Without a franchise agreement, we're considered a utility in bad standing, which A, lengthens the process we have to go through to get permits to do work in the county because we have to patch their roads. It also increases the cost for the permits that we do have to pull. Every time we have to do a patch as a utility in bad standing, it's about $600, which doesn't sound much, but it adds up over time. It also affects the ratepayers who, while not city of Bonny Lake citizens, are ratepayers to the water utility. Those ratepayers have to go through a much larger, longer process, and the county makes us be the enforcement agent for that longer process. So if you're a county resident that's getting a new water service to serve your home, there's a longer process that they have to go through where we have to get a, get them to apply, then we have to get a physical check from them. We have to take the physical check down to Pierce County, wait for County to process the physical check, and then approve the work. So, and the cost is higher. So there's a cost both to the city, which is borne by all ratepayers, and then there's a cost directly borne to the individual ratepayers who live in the county. As I said, while not city residents, they are our ratepayers for the water utility. It also puts us in a, like I said, in a bad legal position when it comes to how our water system's operating there and the rights that we have to operate within county roadways. So that could create some interesting legal challenges if we ever had a disagreement with Pierce County.
Councilwoman Baldwin.
What caused such a long lapse?
There was a disagreement when Tahali went in. There was a water loan line located in 198th that had to be relocated as part of that work. The county's position, and this was seven, eight years ago, was that the cost of that relocation should be borne by the city of Bonny Lake. It was about a half million to three-quarters of a million dollar relocation, and we completely opposed that. And so for about five years, they would send us a check, a bill every year, asking us to pay plus interest. Just within the last probably 12 months, we were able to get the county to agree to disagree. So they have dropped their request that we pay for that relocation. It's no, they're no longer sending us a bill. They don't necessarily agree with us, but they have dropped that request and is no longer, no longer requiring us to pay that money. So the only thing left for us to get back into a utility in good standing was the new franchise agreement and why there was a disagreement over this $750,000 bill. They weren't interested in doing a new franchise. So once we got that resolved, we reached out to Councilmember Morrell on the county council, and he pushed through a new 10-year franchise agreement to allow us to get back as a utility in good standing and operate a little bit easier. It's a lot less work for Jim, I say, when a utility in good standing allows us just to do our work normally out in the county.
Councilwoman Baldwin.
What timeframe do you feel like would be better than 10 years?
Oh, I think five years is probably a reasonable horizon, right? That's within enough time where council members, right, can come on, learn what's going on, have a reasonable perspective on how things work, right? And then be able to understand 10 years, that what's going to happen with 10 years is this is going to come up, and you're going to have council people that have absolutely no background, right, trying to review and understand this, kind of like, kind of like most of us are. I mean, there's one, we have one exceptional member that can give us all the data we need, but.
What are your thoughts about five years then?
We're kind of stuck with 10 years. So the, what happens if the council doesn't approve the franchise as it is tonight? It basically expires, and then we have to reapply in January for a whole new franchise and go through the process all over again. 10 years was actually the recommendation of both myself and the city attorney. The language in the franchise agreement is similar to the franchise agreement we had before that we've operated under on. 10 years is the typical timeline for these franchise agreements, and it is slightly different than the wastewater treatment facility in the fact that the wastewater treatment facility, we're paying for a service from the city of Sumner, where this is just an agreement to allow us to put our infrastructure in unincorporated Pierce County. So it's a little, while similar, they're a little different in what we're agreeing to. We're agreeing to purchase a service from Sumner through the wastewater treatment plan agreement. This is just an agreement to allow us to continue to operate our pipes and our water system within the county. It's slightly different, but they are, they are interrelated, but there's a little, that's a little different nuance in that.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Yeah, since this one, it basically cures that mess that was going on between Pierce County and Bonny Lake, it's already been passed by Pierce County. Apparently, it's all signed off and everything like that. So as Councilmember McLemmons points out, I think I'm very supportive of reducing the timeline there, but it's already been passed by the county. So, you know, next time would be the most appropriate time to do that, when Brittany Rock is sitting around, and you remember this, put it on your agenda for 2034, right? And next time, hopefully, you know, because the other thing in these new, that's really hard to get often enough, is tweaking that language around relocation of utilities. Having a lot of experience in the utility area, the more you can get out of the other person, this is an agreement between two parties. Basically, Pierce County gets us to tell the taxpayers of Bonny Lake, the utility rate players, to move their utilities wherever they want, whenever they want, type of a thing. There's enough nuance in there to kind of arm twist a little bit, but ultimately, you know, what you would love to have is an agreement where it's kind of like, oh, you want us to move our utility? Sure, it's going to cost you, right? Because right now, the city, you know, it's pretty standard for the county to want citizens to pay all those charges, but neither here nor there. It's passed by the county, so I guess, you know, good work and all, and cured that major friction point there, so hopefully, it's worth it, in my mind.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comment? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution R 24-123, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Next item, Madam Clerk.
This is item AB 24128, Resolution R 24128. The council motion would be to authorize the purchase and installation of a bubbler replacement system for a lift station 17.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Motion in a second. Any discussion on this item? No? Just confirming. Okay. All in favor of Resolution R 24-128, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. There is no executive session or closed session, so seeing no more business.
There, sorry.
Sorry, Councilmember Hubler.
Something I forgot, I want to make sure that we know, is I got an email that the Conservation Futures and Open Space Citizen Advisory Board, because I'm an elected official, I cannot sit on that board. So we do have to open it up to the general public and try again to see if we can find anybody to be on that board.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm working and discussing it with Chris because I had checked with him before we had done that, and he's like, yeah, yeah. So he just found out that they were not able to do that. So we do have to open it up. We are trying to hopefully find somebody, but we didn't have any applicants last time, and we had it open for three weeks longer.
If anyone is interested out there who would like to sit on the Conservation Futures, get with us. Yeah, please. That'd be great.
What the Conservation Futures Board does is it looks for property throughout the county that, one of the things they do is that they look through property throughout the county that is valuable environmental resource, and they have funds to then purchase that property in order to preserve it in perpetuity as, in open space. The city has taken advantage of the environmental, the Pierce County Conservation Futures program down at Victor Falls, where we've purchased one or two pieces of property with funding that has come from the Conservation Futures in order to preserve that part of our watershed. So it does speak to a lot of things about how to protect, and it's an organization who's trying to, it has resources to try to acquire property to put them in permanent protection for conservation.
Thank you. If anybody's interested in that, please get with me or Mr. Sullivan afterwards. All right. Thank you. Okay, seeing no more business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
I need to ask you.
Yeah. Want to have another?